Okay, it's five oh three. Welcome to the Transportation Policy and Planning Board Meeting of April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We do appear to have a quorum. Ariva, would you please call the roll?
Badger Nett LaKella. Well, this is our Diana Sattam. Barbara Harrington McKinney. Carolyn McAndrews.
Here.
Christopher McHale.
Here.
Grant Foster.
Here.
Keith Furman.
Present.
Margaret Bergamini is excused, and Randy Muddell is also excused. So that leaves us with Tom Wilson.
Here. So we do have a quorum, only just. We have any registrants for public comment for items not on the agenda?
No, we do not, not at this time, sir.
Okay, thank you. Approval of minutes from our March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting, assuming all board members have had a chance to review those if they so chose. Is there motion to approve? Chris?
Yeah, move approval of the minutes.
Chris, second. Carolyn, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving our minutes from the sorry, March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Close no. Chair believes unanimous, if you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Okay, the vote is unanimous, thank you. Are there any communications, disclosures, or recusals for members of the board? Seeing none, we will move on to our first item for the evening, Legisstar seven zero nine five three, Director's Memo.
Great. I think I'll go ahead and share a screen, just because it'll provide a prompt for me to make sure I get everything. So I think what I'd like to first do is state that the the TPPB voted on a projects list for the Transportation Alternatives Program grant application. That's the alternative program that, or the grant program that funds a lot of pedestrian bike improvements. And at that time, we were unsure if providing additional B-cycle stations could be included in the grant application because of it being a separate entity and also not a nonprofit. We did receive an okay from Wisconsin DOT that we could do it, but our resolution, which is required with our grant application, did not include B-cycle, and so we need to get a new resolution to a new resolution that authorizes this. We actually need to do it relatively quickly in a way that it doesn't have the ability to be re-referred to the TPPB. However, this does, you know, the TPPB was in favor of it at that time. It just wasn't clear if it would meet the program requirements. There are a few maybe clarifications on the Badger Road Shared Use Path Project and also some walking routes near Mendota Elementary and Lindbergh Elementary Schools. We were hoping to have the resolution introduced at tomorrow's council meeting. Right now, we have some, we're clarifying that. However, if there are any questions, we can answer those questions now, and I believe Renee is online. If, if the board has any questions regarding that, if not, I'll just move on.
Questions for Tom?
Okay.
Chris has got his hand up. All right, Chris?
Yeah, so I guess just to clarify, does it, are we gonna have to just put this item on an agenda for TPPB, and then that timing will work? Is that the plan?
No, I, I think because the, the board had already voted on a resolution. I think because the board had already voted on the resolution and had endorsed the B-cycle, but it wasn't clear, and so we put enough latitude within that resolution to allow staff to add it if needed. However, I guess the resolution was too not definitive enough for WISDOT. We are actually already supposed to have that resolution submitted to WISDOT, and we did, but they said that our resolution was not specific enough, and so they've asked us to do a new one. And that being said, we're probably already perhaps a month late, and they've extended the deadline, but so we're I'm, I'm gonna say that this is kind of a a an administrative thing that they want for their files. Renee, you may be able to describe this better?
Yes, so, you know, we wrote it so that we would have the flexi, so we wrote into the resolution that the staff would have the ability to reflect the discussions if they changed the actual projects, but WISDOT was not comfortable with that and said that we needed to update the resolution with the specifics. And specifically, the biggest concern was B-cycle, but they also wanted us to clarify other projects where the scope changed a little bit after the discussion, and so that's what we're trying to do, is just make sure that they have their paperwork that they feel is required in order, even though we submitted it thinking, well, it says that we can do this, that would be good enough.
And we are, technically, the resolution was due about a month ago, right? And so we were, we were gonna do this kind of out of order, and they've granted us a a small extension to get this paperwork in.
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks, Tom.
I'm gonna move on with the rest of the and this, we could have had this as a separate agenda item, but I think the Agenda Setting Committee just felt like this could go as an update rather than as a separate agenda item, since we had, since the board had already voted on this. Funding. This has actually been, I wanna say, a good six weeks for funding. The FTA presented its funding recommendations for the two thousand and twenty-two fiscal year, and in doing so, they increased the small starts allotment funding for our East-West BRT from eighty million to a hundred and three million. This is an increase of twenty-three million, and so this allows us the ability to make our BRT fleet fully electric. And they are doing this without any additional local match required from us, so we were able to to kind of capture that extra money for electric buses without any more costs on our part. The passage of the Appropriations Bill, it's one thing to be recommended, but it's another thing to have that money appropriated, and that money has been appropriated, so the money is there with our name on it, waiting for us to get our, our stuff done. On a separate note, slightly separate note, just on Friday, there's a press conference with Tammy Baldwin and the mayor to announce a six point four million grant that will be used to make Phase Three improvements to the bus maintenance facility on eleven oh one, East Washington. The money helps augment and replaces the ten million that's in the, in the budget. Note that it's actually very fortunate that we got that, because this project is experiencing inflationary pressures as well, and so it'll be more than ten million. Sixty percent plans were introduced into Legisstar and are being voted on tomorrow. And then the council resolution allows us to purchase up to forty-six electric buses from New Flyer. Environmental document has been submitted to FTA, and it's under final review. And then all of our third-party agreements have been finalized, except for with Dane County, and we're just, we're trying to interact with them and, and get that finalized. Parking, it's been, I'm gonna just say it's been a challenging month right now, or without a parking manager, and then we've also lost our parking administrative supervisor, and so that's created, I'm gonna say, a considerable amount of additional work internally and shouldering of parking responsibilities by myself and others, and we're gonna try and get these positions filled relatively quickly, but it's still probably for the administrative supervisor, it could be a month to six weeks away at the, at the soonest. We were also, I'm just gonna highlight a couple of things. We were also pursuing a PEO facility on Pennsylvania Avenue and had submitted a bid that was not successful. We'll continue to look for additional options, but that we might start to need, need to look longer term at the Sail Street facility right now. Passenger rail, we got one, our proposal, it's from a national firm. We just had the Selection Committee this, this morning. They're fully familiar of some of the passenger rail efforts that occurred in the two thousand and ten and two thousand and eleven, and they were on the team. We feel comfortable with their ability and their experience, and so we will probably be introducing that contract very soon. The Transportation Improvement Program process, there's been quite a bit of work on that. That will be coming before the TPPB relatively soon. But there's still a, a few back and forth. And then the same for the TDM ordinance. In, in January, we had presented what we thought were, what we felt like was the final TDM ordinance to the, to the board. Some developers had raised some complications. And then those were addressed somewhat by the, the attorney's office, but the, the changes are enough that we feel like we probably need to bring it before the Transportation Board once more. Transit Network redesign team has developed a series of amendments. I think they're up to amendment eleventh. There'll be a public meeting to discuss those amendments. I think it's been changed to May nineteenth, not May eighteenth. And then the TPPB will have a hearing planned for May thirty-first, and so this board will be and there will be a lot of public comment on that. There will be a lot of public comments, so it will be a relatively long meeting. It's on a Tuesday, not a typical Monday. I think we are introducing the amendments to the board. If I'm correct, I believe it's perhaps at the May sixteenth board meeting, I can't remember exactly. Vision Zero was approved, and we've been admitted into the Vision Zero Network. And Chris and some members of the TPPB should feel pretty good. They made, I felt like a pretty nice compliment regarding enforcement. In fact, they, in their admission, they said, "We compliment Madison's thoughtful approach to reassessing the role of enforcement and traffic safety. It may be a great model for other Vision Zero communities, and we hope you'll keep Vision Zero Network updated on these efforts so that we can share the experience with others." I think largely because of the controversy associated with enforcement, a lot of Vision Zero action plans and NACTO and everything have just basically separated it and saying it's not part of Vision Zero. But we've, we chose, our team chose, to keep it part of it, and I think I think we're doing good. It's a role model, really, for the, for the nation. Capital budget is being submitted this week. It's it's a very busy week. What we will be including in it, I, I would have liked to have just told you exactly what the numbers will be, but we're still working on the numbers. We will provide a Safe Streets for All federal grant so that we can capitalize and have approved a local match for a considerable amount of federal funding that's being made available, specifically targeted towards Vision Zero improvements. And since we're one of like only thirty-two cities that have a Vision Zero action plan, we're, I think we're well positioned. Intercity bus terminal will be in there, the State Street campus garage replacement. The PEO facility, which we are struggling with how to present that, we just don't know quite yet what to do. PEO technology equipment. The North-South Bus Rapid Transit, we had put design monies in there, but the new federal infrastructure law, bipartisan infrastructure law has a lot of money for transit, and we would like to you know, we, we are farther along than other communities, probably even with our North-South line, and so we would like to get it teed up so that it's eligible for some of this new funding that's available. We might request federal grant writing assistance to help capture the bill funding opportunities, because we can only get grants that we apply for, and we can only apply for grants that we have the staff resources to submit, so this might help us. And then we probably will be requesting additional funding for passenger rail studies. And so I, I think that's that's it. Are there any questions or, or thoughts?
Questions for Tom? Chris, go ahead, please.
This feels like a naive question, especially since this might have come through one of the bodies already, but what is the passenger rail station RFP for?
It's a, it's to locate a passenger rail station in the Madison area.
Okay.
To, in, in many ways, to build on efforts that were abandoned in two thousand and eleven. Maybe do a refresh. It's a, it's a relatively we had a relatively minor budget item, a hundred and twenty thousand, but the money allocated for passenger rail was increased by a factor of a five hundred and twenty percent with a bipartisan, and so we want to be ready and have our ducks in order, you might say.
That rings a bell. I was just imagining we were designing a rail station for, for rail we don't have. Thanks.
Any further questions for Tom? All right, seeing none. Thanks, Tom.
Great.
We will then move on to our next item, Legisstar seven zero six three two, accepting the report titled Comprehensive Plan, two thousand and twenty-two progress update.
Brian Grady will be presenting on this.
Great, thanks, Tom. Thanks, everyone. I am, as Tom noted, Brian Grady from the Cities Planning Division, here with our third annual progress update on the comprehensive plan, so it's our annual report, basically, on the two thousand and eighteen comp plan. I'll share my screen here and share a few slides. Hopefully, folks are seeing the PowerPoint here. Thank you. And so like I mentioned, this is our third annual, basically, annual report to the comp plan. We're doing something that is becoming more, more common with the initiatives, which kind of reporting back to the community on progress that we're making towards plans that we're, that we as a city are putting in place. And this is again the third one that we've done. This is reported out on this plan right here, which I think there's been some changes to the TPPB board members here since we presented last, last time, last year, about the same time. But this is the comprehensive plan. Maybe you don't see it in a hard form, hard copy form as much anymore, but feel free to Google it, you'll see it, that this plan has different recommendations. It's the culmination of a process that pretty extensive community outreach and engagement process that was conducted in basically late two thousand and sixteen during two thousand and seventeen, and then the first part of two thousand and eighteen. And we were lucky to have, we're fortunate to have a pretty significant budget for community outreach for this, for this effort to update our, or what was then the two thousand and six comp plan. We engaged many different folks across the city in different formats with a, a large emphasis on reaching folks that are less represented in city processes. And what this, what this meant for us, or what we were doing back in this time period, was trying to show, as we were getting feedback on the drafts of comp plan recommendations, whereas we're getting feedback, we're trying to demonstrate during the process how feedback was being used that we were receiving. And our progress update is really just completing basically a larger feedback loop. And step one here, we received feedback from the community. We incorporated that in step two into the plan. We've been now, for the last three and a half years, working on implementing the plan. Many different agencies have been working on it. And then now we're doing is reporting back to the community. We do that each year in the spring. I mentioned that this comp plan progress update document is really, the intended audience is our residents. We try to provide updates on what's happening, implement the plan, but we do try to write the, write it as, as simple language as possible and relatable, hopefully, for more residents. We basically work this as an inter-agency staff effort, so we, we work with folks all across the departments to get updates from the previous calendar year, and so this, this edition is from basically updates to the two thousand and twenty-one calendar year. And Tom's memo that he just presented offers a lot of significant updates that we'll, we'll be highlighting as they, as they advance advanced comp plan recommendations. We highlight in those next year. And so the comp plan has different, many different recommendations in different topic areas. The bottom right, you see the six elements that the plan's categorized by. We have different recommendations in these different sections. And just in the, in the next, the coming weeks, some staff will be entering a resolution that would add recommendations for the health and safety element, which will also include TPPB-related items, so that that seventh element will be added over the course of the next few months here, and then next year, we'll report out again, items that are advancing those recommendations during the previous calendar year. In terms of for this group here, we've just highlighted the Land Use and Transportation section recommendations. This is one of the six elements. I'll just briefly mention some of the highlights, and so for this last, for two thousand and twenty-one calendar year with the spotlight on the left side here, we highlighted some of the gaps that were filled through ped bike paths, bike lanes, and other means to, to fill gaps in the kind of bike and pedestrian network. And then we offer other, other highlights, and here, I won't read them all, but we highlighted some things related to the network, network redesign, the BRT project. This item, which is Land Use and Transportation, we cover some of the, the, the highlight here was regarding the Odana area plan being adopted. Talking about some of the new housing that were added and where they were added. West Wash improvements. Twenty is plenty, as part of that Vision Zero that we just, that you all just discussed. Talking about the State Street campus garage, and then, which seems like a pretty minor thing now, but we've mentioned the three hundred thousand dollar federal grant funds from the TOD work that's happening right now, but very minor compared to the things that Tom just reported. And so for each of these elements, we have a spotlight and other highlights, try to give life to the, the plan's recommendations and things that have moved forward. And then what we do for each of the, for all of the actions in the plan, we will update the status on each of these through this annual progress update. And the ones that have changed since, since we visited last, since our last year's edition, are the ones highlighted here. And then basically, these highlights are really reflecting a lot of the work And then basically, these highlights are really reflecting a lot of the work done through the network redesign that kind of touches on a few of those here. Intercity bus, a lot of the work that's been done regarding TDM that you all just, that was just mentioned. Working with community groups to bring more folks downtown, make downtown more accessible to more people. Another network redesign. And then we did make some changes. Excuse me, we did make some changes on how we categorized things. The status is can be kind of a tough thing to categorize, a little bit subjective. Basically, for things that we think will continue on, there's no clear completion date. We categorize them as ongoing for items that have maybe a more completion, you know, starting point or completion point. We have them either be not started, in progress, or complete. And so here, we made a modification to recommendation regarding adopting the citywide ped bike plan that was ongoing last year. We decided maybe that is a little more of a discreet start-stop thing, so we put that as not started. And so all of these actions here, the status here is, the items are sourced through working with staff from different departments. One thing we talked about last year was item 8C here, an update to the city subdivision ordinance, which hasn't been completed yet. And we do, we're kind of in queue with the city attorney's office and other departments to start working on that later this year. Update to something that basically, the ordinance that kind of lays, that kind of governs how subdivisions are laid out, what the parameters are. We'll be updating that starting later this year, hopefully, and hope to bring in a lot of the work through, say, Complete Green Streets and other things as we look at how neighborhoods or how subdivisions are laid out. That's all that I have for this presentation. I guess for this point, I could turn over to any questions or comments that folks have.
Thanks, Brian. Questions? All right, seeing no questions, I would be looking for a motion to accept the report. Alder Furman?
Move acceptance of the report.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second by Chris. Any discussion? Alder Furman, do you want to speak any further to your motion?
I'm just, I could express my appreciation for staff continuing to focus on this plan and keep it updated and keep us updated of those updates. So thank you so much for that work. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none on the motion to accept the report titled Comprehensive Plan 2022 Progress Update. All those in favor, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Oppose, no? Chair believes unanimous. If you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, that will go down as unanimous. Thank you. Our next item for the evening is Legisdar 70654, Amending the Yahara Hills Neighborhood Development Plan, a supplement to the City of Madison Comprehensive Plan to provide updated recommendations for the area located on the eastern portion of the Yahara Hills Golf Course.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Gregor. I'm with the City of Madison Planning Division. I'm here with my colleague Urbishy Martin, and going to review the Yahara Hills Neighborhood Development Plan Amendment. Go over a little bit of background information on the plan, then talk a little bit about the draft amendment recommendations, a little bit of the public feedback that we received at our public information meeting, and then talk about the next steps for the amendment. So why are we proposing an amendment? Dane County is proposing a new landfill on the eastern half of the Yahara Hills Golf Course, just south of the current landfill, along with a sustainable business park and the Waste and Renewables Operation Center. This proposal does not meet the requirements of the current NDP, so an amendment is required. A little bit of background, the Yahara Hills NDP was adopted in 2017. This proposed amendment is only affecting this area outlined in red, south of US Highway 12 and 18, and west of County Highway AB and north of Siegel Cow Road. And here's just enlargement of that same graphic. It's about 332 acres, takes up a good chunk of the golf course. And the amendment's also looking at the few properties south of the golf course, north of Siegel Cow Road. What are we looking at as part of this amendment? We're evaluating and recommending land uses, looking at transportation and ped bike facilities. So the current NDP shows park and open space, active recreation for the area outlined in red. The proposed changes to the land use include a large area of industrial use and then other open space. So that could be stormwater management, that could be natural features like wetlands, floodplains. It could also be buffer areas for the landfill itself. Some of the transportation recommendations, just some minor changes to what's in the current NDP. Reinforcing the need for a southern loop road to connect to the Ho-Chunk gaming facilities that will act as a secondary means of ingress and egress. The 2017 plan also shows that loop road. Also suggesting moving some of the planned overpasses for bike and pedestrian facilities. Suggesting moving the 1 over 12 and 18 further, a little bit further east to align with existing Meyer Road right away, north of 12 and 18. And then suggesting moving the ped overpass over I-3990 further southeast to align with future crossing, street crossing of the interstate. So it would be for vehicles as well as ped bike versus having just a dedicated ped bike and then a dedicated street overpass. The plan is also being updated to call for a vegetative buffer around the landfill. 150-foot wide buffer with a landscaper minimum of 10 feet tall. And the vegetative buffer being up to 70, or a minimum of 75% evergreen vegetation. So this is a cross-section of what that might look like as it interacts with the future land use. And this is showing it at County Highway AB, but it would be similar all the way around the landfill. These are a couple of, the next couple of slides are a couple of graphics that the county produced to show the impact of the proposed landfill at, essentially, at capping. So the view on the upper right is existing today. There's a viewpoint locator map here. So we're at Mill Pond Road. Entrance to kind of the Ho-Chunk area, looking across the golf course to the east. And as you can see, you know, there's a vegetative buffer, some existing vegetation, and you can kind of see just in the background there, the proposed future landfill. And then this is another view, looking here on County Highway AB, kind of looking back towards the Rotafeld landfill, which you can see in the background here, the vegetative buffer, and then the proposed new landfill. Again, this would be, you know, decades into the future when that would be capped at that elevation. As I mentioned before, we held a public information meeting and feedback meeting on March 17th with the neighborhood. This is a summary of the comments that we received. I would say all of these comments have more to do with the actual landfill itself than what's proposed in the amendment, but residents expressed concerns about impacts on their property values. You know, asked why this location was selected, any effects on drinking water, and then concerns over odors and how the current landfill is managed. The county was in attendance at that meeting and were able to answer all of these questions at that meeting. Anticipated timeline for the adoption, obviously, here tonight, asking for this board's approval. Next stop would be Plan Commission next week, Monday. And then anticipating potential adoption by council on May 10. And with that, happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Let's see here. We do have two registrants for public comment. We have John Welsh and Roxanne Winkies, both from Dane County Waste and Renewables, the Department of Waste and Renewables. Neither support or oppose, but will be able to answer questions. So are there any questions for those two registrants or for Jeff? Go ahead, Alder Foster.
Thanks. Just one question for Jeff. And I don't know what the edge of the planning area is for this on the kind of southwest corner. But if you could pull up the map that showed the proposed updates to the overpass locations. I mean, I think the one on the north makes sense, aligning with the, you know, future kind of Meyer Road alignment. I think that one seems pretty straightforward. The other one, I'm just trying to place this a little bit better for what happens, kind of screen left there in particular, and where so I see a proposed sort of future path along the interstate, and then right now, sort of a connection that kind of goes to where the overpass used to be. So just trying to understand that, if that still makes sense with that alignment, or if if we're proposing to move the overpass, if we should really potentially reconsider that path alignment.
So it gets a little complicated down in this area. McFarland has annexed essentially this area. In the Marsh Road Neighborhood Development Plan, it was called for the type of development you see here. The cross-hatched area is the area that McFarland annexed. They've indicated that they're going to be working on a plan for this area in the coming year or so and are not necessarily anticipating it to be residential. So you know, these paths come from the Marsh Road Neighborhood Development Plan. Planning Division has, is anticipating updating that plan after McFarland puts out their plan. So at that time, I think it would make sense to evaluate, reevaluate kind of where these paths go. The, you know, the discussion we had with transportation folks in the MPO was about these overpasses. And I think the feeling was at that time, we may not be able to get both from the DOT crossing the interstate, and perhaps it made sense to consolidate them in one location. But again, we can we're open to suggestions there.
Yeah, that sounds good. Just so that you said the Marsh Road, or what's the name of the other plan that?
Marsh Road NDP.
Marsh Road. And does that, where is the, is the border also for the interstate or?
Yeah, the border is the interstate.
Okay. I mean, I don't know if it's, I mean, it seems like it would make sense to kind of think about it harder as part of that update process, but would just, I mean, so maybe I don't know if there's a way to even put kind of some kind of note in there or something. But yeah, like, it'd be great to kind of take a look at that. Obviously, as you said, it kind of depends what McFarland sort of ends up doing with their planning process, but like ultimately getting, you know, some kind of a connection sort of from like the Kip Road, you know, area through and across the interstate would be really important. And then, you know, it's sort of a connection south and, you know, through McFarland into Siegel Cow. So yeah, maybe just put a marker in that for that, for that planning process, and I guess depending on what that shows would either confirm or maybe suggest a different alignment for that, that overpass that you've shown here.
Sure.
So I guess that would be, yeah, my one comment is maybe just call that out somewhere that this, you know, final alignments are dependent on that other planning process or something.
Yeah, we can definitely make that note in the text.
Great, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments, either for Jeff or from the folks from Dane County who are also on the call? All right, seeing none, I'll be looking for a motion to approve, recommend approval of the amendment. Alder Foster?
I would recommend approval with the one note that I just mentioned for an addition.
Hugh, is there a second? Say, Alder Furman. Discussion, Alder Foster, do you want to speak further to your motion? All right, any additional discussion? Seeing none on the motion to amend the Yahara Hills Neighborhood Development Plan, a supplement to the City of Madison Comprehensive Plan to provide updated recommendations for the area located on the eastern portion of the Yahara Hills Golf Course, with the addition of the note that Alder Foster just detailed. All those in favor, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Oppose, no? Chair believes unanimous. If you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, that will go down as unanimous. Thank you. That is all we have for the evening, rather short meeting. I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn. Audrey, thank you. Is there a second? Second, Alder Furman. All those in favor of adjourning the meeting for this evening, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Appears to be unanimous. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Aye.
Have a good week.